Welcome, everybody. Got a large crowd tonight, we appreciate that. We'll start off with a prayer request list. Need to remember Ms. Stephanie Dyers, they just had a baby. Jennifer Rectors, countywide ESL, her mom's having surgery. Need to remember my mother-in-law Gaye Yaman. Misty's, that's Misty's mother, of course, and she's having a pretty rough time. And that's all I have. Are there any others we need to add?
Unspoken.
Unspoken? If there are no others, we'll go to the Lord in prayer. To heaven, Father, we come to you, thanking you for this beautiful day that you've given us, for every blessing in it, for the health we have to be able to be here tonight. For this school system, Father, we're truly blessed, and we just want to pray that you'll continue to bless it. Father, we want to pray for all those that may have been mentioned or may be unspoken, or any we may know of in the community that may be sick, or shut in, or lost loved ones. We know that that comfort's within you, and we just pray that you'll give it to them, and it be your will that you'll help them back to their much-wanted health. Father, we pray tonight that, as always, that we always make the right decisions for this school system. We pray that you'll give us that knowledge and that wisdom. Father, most of all this night, we want to thank you for your son. It's his name we offer this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start tonight with awards and recognitions. This is something that I really enjoy, and I'm sure the rest of the board does. We'll start with our countywide Teacher of the Year, Mr. Smith.
Well, first of all, I don't think there's any doubt, we've got some of the best teachers in, not only in the state of Tennessee, but in the United States. They have to improve it. The last two years, we've been highly represented at the state level, and really come away very focused to winning the last two years. Maybe we've got a shot this year at Field X itself. Ms. Bively usually does this, but she wanted me to let everybody know she's at the Junior Pro game.
Miranda's at Junior Pro, she's at Rush.
Okay, she's at Rush, basketball, by the way.
Yeah, both of them are basketball.
All right, so we're going to have Teacher of the Year, countywide, for the 2018-19 year. For pre-K, from Miss, from pre-K four, defeated elementary school. She started her career in 2014-15 school year. Currently in the first grade. Her principal was Miranda Coog, Ms. Kayla Kemp.
Thank you so much.
We don't break up.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Also, defeated elementary school. She started her career in 2015. She's teaching seventh and eighth grade, math and science currently. There's no excuse that this school should be with two of the top teachers in the, they got nothing to crutch on. Ms. Amanda Bond.
Eddie, those pictures of that one may have to have a review.
Okay, representing their county in the 912, going to High School. She started in 2009, 2010 school year. She has taught at Union Heights, going to elementary, going to High School. She is currently at going to High School, eighth grade math. The principal is Mr. Shane Beighton. He needs to come over and get his picture, make it with her too. Ms. Lindsey Foster. All three of these started their teaching careers in Smith County, and luckily we've been able to retain them. We wish them the best of luck at the next level, and hopefully we can do something to help you out when you get there. Thank you.
We will move on now to our Smith County High School Ladyhouse Soccer Team. And Mr. Lewis and Coach Basal, if you will come up.
And I'll let you do the business with the team. Where, Mr. Director, where do you want them to be?
Very.
I can just stand right in here.
Yeah, just right in here.
Stand right in here.
Everybody knows Coach Basal, and I will tell you about that, Coach Basal's face is already red. But, you know, I've gotten more engrossed in soccer watching him than four bucks dollars these other gentlemen play. And I guess I'm going to have all those things talk to the gym, and I would feel like I could have all that. Oliver Culver did that, I was really impressed with that. And Coach Basal really exemplified, made, made it, not only his ability, he loves the Dow, though. So I talked to Director Smith, and Director Smith said, you know, they deserve recognition, so I'm going to sit down and let him be talking, but we appreciate you very much, sir.
Thank you. Just a little statistics on this team. We took, I took it over in 2017. Our record started there at an overall, an overall record of eight and eight. We were district, district record was six and oh, and we were the district seven-eight champions for the first time in Smith County High School history. We had four first-team all-district players, two second teams, the MVP of the district, and the Coach of the Year that year, 2017. 2018, we came back with the same goal, that we wanted to go as far as we can, and hopefully be back-to-back district champions, and we were. Our record was 12, 4, and 1. We participated in the Thoroughbred Cup up in Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, and was honored to get that call from them. District record was eight and oh, and we were the back-to-back district seven-eight champions again, and again was made history that year. The district all-team members were Maya Harrelson, Cheyenne Newton, Samantha Lewis, and Caitlin Patterson. District seven-eight all-district second team was Mallory Dillon and Avery Schofield. And the MVP of District seven-eight was Kristen Shouders, and the district goalkeeper was Kayla Starling. So at this time, I'm going to honor them. I'm going to start with, I'm just going to go through the entire list of the team. Parents, please stand, because this is a community thing. It takes a village to help this, and we've had a lot of support. So we're going to start with the freshmen, and every time I announce your child's name, if you please stand, if you're present. Lizzie Harper, Anna Bonney, Brianna Sams, Ally Hall, Michaela Pace, Morgan Hula, and Biz Davis were our freshmen this year. Our sophomores were Janita Wallace, Brennan Rigsby, Haley Murphy were our sophomores this year. Our juniors were Autumn McCrary, Caitlin Patterson, Mallory Dillon. Those were our juniors. And we had a big senior class, and they're the main reason that I would say we've had a lot of success, is they really bought in. As soon as me and Coach Kidd and Coach Lisa took over, so they're, they deserve this recognition. They're going to get a plaque that was in their honor. That's also a copy of our banner that is mounted on our building down there in our home field. So when I say your seniors, go ahead. Coach Lisa's going to present you with that, and then we'll get a big picture. Kayla Starling, go ahead. And Sarah Schafers. Schafers, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Kristen Shouders, Cheyenne Newton, Maya Harrelson, Samantha Lewis, Delaney Eldred, Hurley Soon, Avery Schofield, Alyssa West, and Natasha Reeves. Those were our seniors this year. So again, I'm proud of these seniors. They came out, they really bought in, and they made history, and they set the bar for everybody else, for the rest of our teams to go on. So our underclassmen, they've achieved a lot. A lot of them had a lot of playing time and contributed a lot of success as well. So we have now set the bar, so we're just going to keep going after championships and all that. We appreciate all the recognition and support we have from the Smith County Board of Education. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Unless any of them would like to speak.
I'm sure they don't.
You know what's great is, I let the coach, or I asked the coach to just say their names so that we wouldn't miss pronouncing, he does. Thank you.
Now we will, we'll let everybody clear out that wants to clear out. We will move on now to our next award and recognition, our 2019 National Merit Scholarship finalist, from SCHS, Ms. Morse.
As I said, I'm going to recognize our 2019 National Merit Scholarship finalist. I'm filling in for Ms. Bively. As Mr. Smith already said, she had here when she was pissed to fall tonight, and she apologized. But anyway, life happens, and so here I am, going to do this. Our 2019 National Merit Scholarship finalist is Ms. Tristan Nixon. Tristan, if you'll come on up. This young lady has been here quite a few times, accepting awards from us. I think she's a big math whiz, which probably why you do well on tests. Yeah, she's probably a good reader, too. But Tristan is a senior at Smith County High School, and she has demonstrated exceptional academic ability. As we said, she is the 2019 National Merit Scholarship finalist, and you started this process a while back, 2016 maybe? Okay. But in September of this school year, she actually qualified as a semifinalist for the program, and she has now fulfilled all requirements to be a finalist. And I think we started out with like 22,000 high school seniors, and now we're down to 7,500, which is awesome. And that's across the US. Right? That's awesome. She had to take a test called the PSAT, and I'm sure you scored really well, to, to 99 percentile. That is awesome. Congratulations. That is very, very awesome. And so, let me present to you our 2019 National Merit Scholarship finalist. Her parents are Mike and Michelle Nixon, and as we said, she goes to Smith County High School, and I believe you were recently named select torn. Congratulations on lots of awards. And Eddie, you want to get our picture? Mr. Smith, you want to come up and get a picture with Tristan?
Yep.
And we'll see you back here next month.
Okay, we will move on now to our DAR Good Citizen Award, Ms. Cindy Dial.
This is such a special meeting to be at, and it makes me feel very old, because Kayla Kemp was in kindergarten when I taught music in the state. And now she's Teacher of the Year. I am here to honor the Principal DAR, our Good Citizen. DAR stands for Daughters of American Revolution. We have three purposes: education, preservation of history, and to generally make everyone aware of the contributions of our founding fathers, so that those contributions are not forgotten. One of the ways that we try to do this in the school system is through the American History Essay Contest, and also through the Good Citizens Contest. Each year, one good citizen is chosen from Gordonsville High School and Smith County High School. And this year, the Gordonsville High School recipient is Jack Thomas Frye. Jack, if you'd come on up. He is the son of Brian and Regina White. He is the fifth in the top ten at Gordonsville, plans to go to Tennessee Tech in the fall, and study agribusiness or civil engineering. So, Jack, we are very proud of you. In addition to what the school board has for you, the DAR has a small token of our appreciation. Now, let's see. Let's get you out.
It's all about the picture.
Now, I asked Gina how to do this, so while I'm here, I would like to, if any of the defeated teachers are still present.
They're not standing.
I think they've got to.
But I'll be glad.
Would you please?
Okay, so can you come here and let me get this?
What am I going to do?
The Canyonport DAR chapter, in accordance with our goals, I'm trying to help people remember the founding fathers' contributions, and what this country was founded on, is presenting George Washington's City Elementary School in Smith County. And because defeated was they have their Teacher of the Year people here tonight, I thought, oh, this is my grand. I should have grabbed him and said, "Clyde." So this is about the Canyonport DAR chapter. When I was a little girl, the only picture in the classroom was George Washington. So that's kind of what we're thinking, is to make sure that picture still retains its importance in classroom.
Sure, well, thank you.
If you will take it to defeat.
I will take it in the morning. Thank you very much.
And Diana, I should have called you to get a picture.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's get to DAR members.
Get a picture.
Okay, I'll switch to the other side. Okay, and then is, she's hearing this, it's the law right here. Don't forget it. Okay, and then if I could, the Smith County Middle School principal, and I'm sorry you are my husband, I'm Cindy Dial. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. You know, these retired teachers, they got to do something to be in the spotlight still. And we want to go ahead and present this to the Smith County Middle School, because the American History Essay Contest has been won by students from the Smith County Middle School for the last many years. And because of their participation, we want to welcome this.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you all. Now we will have the DAR American History Essay Contest with Ms. Diana Thomas.
Thank you. I am Chaplain and American History Chairman of the Canyonport Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. And I'm here today to honor the American History, Tennessee History poster, and Christopher Columbus, who did the E F and G on your shield. And so I'm supposed to begin with the American History. This is a competition for grades five through eight. The topic this time was the 100th Anniversary of Women's Right to Vote, 1919, this is 2019. The seventh grade winner is Ava Grissa. She received first place in our chapter, as well as Sequoia District. She has participated in the essay contest. You might have seen her appear before years in the past. She has done it for three years, and has one more year. So we're looking to probably do that one more year. Wait a minute, who needs to make a picture with you?
Principal.
Principal.
Principal. Just help me get this from your feet.
I'm on the phone. Do you want to?
Yes, I will.
Don't believe you have. The eighth grade winner in the American History Essay Contest is Chloe Flittle. She's from Smith County Middle School. She received first place in our chapter, as well as Sequoia District. And I want to say especially, that you've probably seen Chloe in past years also. She has done an essay each year she could, fifth through eighth grade, as far as I know, this has never happened before in our chapter. She has participated for four years, and all four years she won for our chapter, and three out of those four, she won for Sequoia District. Congratulations. And next, we have the Tennessee History Poster Contest. This is for grades four through seven, and Aubrey Polis is our sixth grade winner from going to elementary school. Let me tell a little bit about she. She, as you can see, the topic was Tennessee's little-known symbol. All right. She has won first place for our chapter, Sequoia District, and also a state winner. She will be going to the Capitol, May the 31st, and be honored. She has done a poster for three years as she could, fourth, fifth, and sixth, and has won first place all three years. Only one left, seventh grade. So we're looking forward to that next year. Congratulations, all. That's it. She's a seventh grader at Smith County Middle School. She'll just sit over She is our first-place chapter winner, first-place Sequoia District, and first-place state winner. Both of these girls are going to the Capitol, May the 31st. She didn't do her poster in the fourth and fifth grade, but she did in the sixth. And last year, she won also and went to the Capitol. So both these girls are making their second trip to the Capitol. Let me say, if you think about that, these girls have done a total of five posters, and all five at once today. That's just awesome. Congratulations. I need that back here. Go to the Capitol. They didn't have that yet. It's going to land later, if anything. All right, and the final award goes to, come on, Brooke. Brooke Grissa. She is our Christopher Columbus Essay Contest winner. This is for grades nine through 12, and her essay, of course, is about Columbus, and it compared ships and voyages then with what would be going on today. So she is, they combined all these grades together, so there's just one winner for grades nine and twelve. So she's the ninth grade winner from Smith County High School, first place for Canyonport Chapter. Congratulations. And Principal, anybody?
Yeah, Principal's here.
Congratulations, Brooke. Cindy started at the beginning tonight. I want to say thank you, Lord, for supporting these young people, and our Canyonport Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. One of our goals, as Cindy says, as a chapter, is to promote education in our schools, and you're allowing us to be here today to help to achieve that goal, and we thank you very much.
We want to, we want to thank all our presenters tonight, and then say congratulations to all of our award winners. You're welcome to leave if you don't want to stay for the, for the rest of the meeting. All right, let's move on. We'll move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
Motion to approve, eight for yes.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our superintendent actions. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at those. Now we will move to new business A. This is Policy Amendment 4.6, grading systems. This is the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business B?
So move.
Mr. Shouders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This is the first, yes, first of two readings. Move on to new business B. It's Policy Amendment 4.605, graduation requirements. This is also the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business B?
Some move.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business C. It's Policy Amendment 1.803. This is the tobacco-free schools. Do we have a motion on new business C? This is also the first of two readings.
I'm going to vote.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McHale, any discussion?
Yes. Is this something that we could possibly go ahead and pass using 1.600 to encompass? Because it's dealing with tobacco-free schools, and I know dueling, vaping, and all those things are an issue in our schools. And if, I guess I have a question for you, Director Smith, as to whether you feel like that we need to go ahead and expand our policy, rather than waiting to April to do that?
I think it'd be very beneficial. Judge Collins had reached out to me about two weeks ago, and due to this, it's a jewels and vapes, and it looks like the little computer gig guy with all that.
Like a drug.
It's a big deal, and it's really hard to discriminate all the different drugs that are in that, not just the smoking part, but I think it would be very beneficial to, I mean, as quick as we could do it.
Mr. Chairman, I will change my motion to, for new business C, using the policy.
1.600.
1.600 for passing on the first reading.
Mr. Manning wants to revise his motion to include 1.600, which were passed on the first of two readings. Mr. McHale?
Second, yes.
Mr. McHale will second that. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business D. This is Policy Amendment 4.209, Alternative Credit Options. This is also the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business D?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moore, any discussion?
Yes, can I explain that a little bit?
Yes, sir.
We, well, I was principal years ago, now a long time ago, but they, they had a thing at the time called ITV. It wasn't nearly as advanced, obviously it is now, where like if Mr. Lewis was a doctor in a certain field, we could be at four different locations and have a certified college professor. What this is doing, and my understanding, Bob Staple paid for the expenses of this and maybe even the expense of a teacher. If we can align this with what we're trying to do, and so it would make our kids, the only equal plan, feel more so say that they're a much bigger school and give them an opportunity. So it's a really good thing, not just the policy.
Okay. It sounds like a good program.
Mm-hmm. It does.
Any more discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business E. Policy Amendment 4.603, Promotion and Retention. This is the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business E?
So moved. Y'all make.
Mr. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? New business F. This is Policy Amendment 4.316. This is also the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business F?
So moved.
Mr. Apple?
Second. Second.
Mr. McHale, any discussion?
Can I ask you, Mr. Chairman, sort of, what's a breakdown of this real quickly as far as suspension, expulsion, and remand? Can you tell me, Mr.? What's a brief overview of this real quick, in a nutshell?
It's included.
F.
Yeah, what it is, if a student comes before the Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority, which is in here, and it's made up of a group of people around here.
It's made up of principals who are selected each year.
Okay.
After they get their, for the man, they can go before him to appeal.
Like if, by a man, okay, you'd like to say that their offense is categorized and they feel like, they come in, let's see, you got a 365-day suspension. All right, they come in front of the disciplinary hearing board. They may come back and say, we, under the circumstances, there were special circumstances, we would think this child or student needs six months of alternative school. The parent may still say, I don't think that's fair. Then they can go in front of me to be adjusted.
And then if they're not happy, they can go before you.
So it's like four different levels they can appeal.
Okay, cool. Yep.
It's just an appeal.
Well, just out of curiosity, what is the timeframe that that would take place in?
Five, five days.
Each time, each time they've got five days?
And I don't know, we've been very forced since Doc's gone. Most of the time, they'll go ahead and schedule a meeting while they're here in the building, see me if I'm available. You know, because we won't, you know, sometimes there's a reason to modify it. It's going to count against us. It's a one-time offense and they can still get educated. So if we can go ahead and not let that count as an out-of-school suspension, they can still say, oh, of course, and we'll allocate, like you guys do in the court, so that this is the first time, let's try to have, you know, a little still isolated for other students.
Is this, is this part of the students before the school starts? Let's just say a student don't know about this or a parent. How would they know that they could appeal this before you?
They know when the offense occurs, like
Okay.
Like they have a handbook.
Okay.
They sign off. But also, like, Gina's a principal and she catches me doing illegal drug, she has to, by law, notify those parents. And when they come to get that child and let them know, if you don't appeal this, then X number of times, then your rights are over. We've got this amount of time to appeal it. So they are notified. And we usually, to be perfectly honest, we probably don't need to all the time, but we're trying to help these kids, okay? So we'll usually even call from this office and say, Brian, you do know we've only got one day left to fill this. And we don't have to do that, but we usually follow up to make sure that happens.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business G. This is a Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority. This is the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business G?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lewis, Mr. Shoulders, any discussion?
This just makes consistency with the other policy.
If there's no more discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business H, granting tenure. We have to vote, yes, each one of these separate. So we'll go through, we'll go through the list and we'll vote. And, okay. We'll start off with Carthage Elementary School, Katie Goosby. Do we have a motion on Katie Goosby?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple. And there's really no discussion on these. We'll just vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Defeated Elementary School, Lindsay Angel Hackett. Do we have a motion on Lindsay?
So moved.
Mr. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor. We'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Defeated Elementary, Kayla Kemp.
So moved.
Mr. Moore?
Second.
Who was second? Mr. Apple. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Gorontville High School, Jessica Biggs.
So moved.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McHale? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Goorontville High School, Brittany Hackett.
So moved.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Smith County High School, Carly Johnson. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Smith County Middle School, Jerry Buttram. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Smith County Middle School, Amanda Hicks. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the last one, Smith County Middle School, Ms. Audrey Russell.
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Apple?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. All those on that list are recommended for tenure. Thank y'all. We will move on to bid item I. This is, new business I is a bid approval for L N switch purchases and L N cabling upgrades. Do we have a motion on new business I?
Make motion.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McHale, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call. Business involves money, Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business J. This is a bid approval for L N switch annual software upgrade and maintenance. Do we have a motion on new business J?
So moved.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business K. This is a bid approval for diesel fuel. Do we have a motion on new business K?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion?
This was, I thought we did this last, is this for every month? Are we using that much diesel?
We have to, yeah, we have to
When she gets to a certain, certain level in her tank, it's yours more.
Okay.
Pretty much about
We, we had talked about it, like you guys did, two cents over the prime or whatever, but she felt like she could get a more honest bid. We just save money, but doesn't it?
We've looked at every, every way to make this more economical in the almost seven years that I've been on the board. And this seems to be the way that it works.
It's a little more work.
She said she'd rather do it that way.
Well, I mean, we've looked at tanks and everything.
So it changes every month, I know, with the market, yeah.
And sometimes we get a bunch of bids and sometimes we don't. And the practical matter is, it's already been done. We're really just
Yeah. Yeah, I got you.
Because of the amount of money.
Unless she's got to have it, she's got to have it.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. All right. Let's move on to discussion A. This is in-school position procedures. Mr. Jamie Winkler, he will come up.
Go ahead. When this ended on the agenda, it's actually, we could not discuss that. And before we started, this is actually something that you probably have a two- or three-hour work session on. They talk about there's several different policies, several different statutes that you look at. I went through and just tried to give a broad stroke overview of where, where the board is and as far as what your policy shows on going from the broad to the more specific as to the board's role, your director's role, and then breaking down the principal's role in that. I've got a little cheat sheet I'll give to the board after we discuss it. It's just got a bunch of numbers on it. Probably means a whole lot now. But right now, the Board of Education is employing currently 488 individuals. I looked at the board book and in the last year, that's March of 18, 2019, you had 182 staff placements, 59 resignations, and 16 transfers within your system. That's just within the last 12 months. And a couple of, three of those would have been summer months as well. So you can see the scope of the, because of the fact you're a large employer, what happens as far as resignations. It's a significant number. This board, as a collective group, by Tennessee law, you're authorized to authorize all expenditures, do what you did tonight, employ and dismiss all tenured teachers, approve the annual budget, and determine policy. You do have a policy that you abstain from individual counsel and action regarding staff members, and then you're required by law to employ a director. You have a specific board policy that wherein you authorize a particular position, you authorize the position, that is 5.105. And in that, through your budgeting, you will create basketball coach, assistant coach, EA cafeteria personnel. The duties as far as the actual hiring and is assigned to the director to go through qualified applicants. And once hired, board policy 5.108 provides that those support personnel are supervised by the building-level principal or their designated. The essential function of your director that you contracted with is to hire, transfer, suspend, grant leave of absence, and dismiss all personnel, with the exception of placing teachers on tenure and dismissing tenured teachers. I said it was a good night to do that because right before we started talking, that's exactly what you just did for those tenured employees. You voted on each one. And by statute, that's the only one that you, only level of employees that you actually take a vote on. And the law requires that, and that's the only ones that you can. Each month, this director, this director's office, and has been the case for as long as I've been here, Mr. Bell, as well, you are provided a report of superintendent actions. You see those, Mr. Smith goes over those. And those include all the staff placements, transfers, resignations, substitute suspensions, and terminations. That report is then included in your board minutes the next month. So, and may I ask why you do that? You actually have a sample agenda in your board policy, and I've got the number in here, that that's to be included on your agenda. So you get those superintendent reports. Mr. Lewis did that every month. Everybody, so you know, as a board, who's been placed in your school, who's resigned, who's been suspended. I don't ever call them termination. The terminations, as far as tenured teachers, they actually have to have charges brought against them. Your director, or I think even the statute allows the principal to file formal charges. And those are written charges that are provided to the tenured teacher. And then you are given those, and I don't know the exact process off the top of my head, but my recollection is, you have to determine that if the charges are proven true, that they want, they would want a dismissal. You're not making a decision at that point. But the board does get charges for the tenured teachers. Now, going inside each school, I told you, we go from the broad to the specific. Just like you saw in your board package tonight, the building principal will make recommendations. You had recommendations from your principals here that for teachers to be granted tenure. You saw all those from, and the director gets those same recommendations for any staff placement. And it's his obligation, or her obligation, to sign off on those and approve those. He accepts, he or she accepts or rejects that recommendation, but I'll have to say, it's always been standard of practice to accept the recommendation of the principal. And they are at the building level and they evaluate and see these, these particular staff members. Often the case, the most visible staff placements involve inter-scholastic athletics. I mean, that's, we're all aware of that. And you have a policy 4.301 that athletes, athletic shall be administered as part of the regular school program and shall be the principal's or the athletic director's responsibility. So as far as monitoring placement affair, the principals are required by policy to attend away games, any off-campus, monitor practice, make sure everything is reasonable. And some discussion, and just because I've had the question asked me, I thought I'd tell the board. A coach or an athletic director, they don't attain tenure in that position. They attain their tenure in a tenured professor position in a teaching spot. So just because a staff member, or say someone is removed as an athletic director from a particular position, doesn't mean they're out of assistance. They are still a tenured professional in school. That, but Spring Court of Tennessee held almost four years ago now that you don't have tenure in that particular spot, and it eliminates any hearings or anything like that. But that is a very broad-stroke overview. I was asked to kind of give a rundown of what our policies provide. I tried to go from the broad to the more specific, but there are specific questions, we'll certainly answer them. But again, this board could have, you could sit here for a day and a half going over all personnel policies. But if there's any questions, we'll be happy to try and address them.
If not, we will move on to our annual policy review for February. Anybody have any questions about those policies? If not?
I need to interject something out there. I was asked by board member, and it's my fault, I told you wrong about the timing. I thought it's too late to get on. I think you got a question about school supplies. And if you want to ask it, and I would like to elaborate on it.
Yes, well, and thank you, Director.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Oh, you're all right, sir. We, this is something, you know, that has kind of been brought to me numerous times by employees, you know, talking about not spend a lot of money in classroom, spend a lot of money in price range. And of course, we've got a policy in place that says a teacher is not supposed policy in place that says a teacher is not supposed to spend anything in the classroom. So, kind of let y'all know, I said something to Director Smith about it, that I was still getting phone calls and stopped at Walmart, or you name it, about it. And, and he said I will immediately make a phone call to all the principals right now and go over this with them. But then I, today, to let you know, I got a note again today. So I don't know what the confusion is, or whatever. I mean, we do have a policy in place. I know you talked to the principals.
Each, each principal with individually contacted. They had a staff meeting, and we have an actual staff meeting again Thursday, and we'll be on over again, so.
So I, I mean, I know you did that. I guess my concern is, I mean, I got another call today at, at eight forty-three A M. about it. And I'm just like, you know, I don't know. I mean, the director's gonna have it on the agenda again tonight. I'll, I'll ring it up again and say something about it. I mean, obviously, we've got a policy against it. You're not supposed to be doing it. And I've had some tell me they're spending two, two hundred fifty dollars a month. So I don't, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what the confusion is. It doesn't need to be happening. We don't, we don't need, I mean, if a teacher needs X, Y, Z in a classroom, we've got a policy that says, you know, we're gonna pay for that. So I don't know if you've got some guidance on that or whatever, but wherever it's coming from, or however it's happening, it needs to stop.
When our teachers are out for the summer, when our teachers are out for the summer, and they come back to school, I mean, are they supposed to, you know, they have to get their room ready. Are they supposed to spend the, you know, I got teachers up there telling me they'd spend a hundred fifty, two hundred dollars to get their room ready.
But there's no, no reason for it. We're money. We, like I said, we got it on our principals, saying it over again. I should miss this part up. We talked to each individual teacher. Angel, as a principal, I see you back there, what, is your teachers, I mean, they knew they had two hundred dollars B P funding, they knew.
It's waiting over that at the beginning of the year, at the year, we just remember what they had to spend, just how they need to allocate and make it work about the year. I mean, it never presented a problem at school, but we just kind of all the upfront, what they had, that they need to have to allocate. Some of them used it early on, and some of them weren't, it was about the year.
So they're getting that money back, right?
Well, and they did, what they do sometimes, they spend it, and then they turn it back for reimbursement when they get their B P funding too. But they know to do the better because I know, and maybe we're not doing a good job.
I got you, I got you.
There's money. There's no excuse for that.
Well, I guess what I, I guess what I just, to draw this to an end or whatever, I guess what I just gonna say is, you know, we've got a policy against it, obviously. It doesn't ever need to occur. I mean, Director Smith has considered me a thousand percent that there's money for whatever a teacher needs for classrooms. So, you know, I don't know what else to do. They shouldn't, they shouldn't spend.
I could actually go over from the whole in-service, it would say again, but, but like I said, it's on our agenda even again. I think we called two different times in the last week to tell, and then it's on our agenda for principals meeting, when we meet again just with, and I know that one particular school, I called her, I guess the third time.
Well, I knew you called, but like I say, it just keeps, keeps coming up, keeps coming up, keeps coming up. And of course, everybody knows, I mean, I haven't been shot, but I'm pro employees and all this, but I just don't want to spend any money on that.
Could have posted on the classroom door.
They have to.
But they get so much money to get their room ready.
That's best for B P funding. They get that, which is not a lot of money.
Yes.
And we try to furnish coffee paper and water, and that kind of thing. We, actually, I think I told, I tried to cut, I don't, some of them sent some supply list on, I think, to cover all children. But I don't even like that, because we've got the money to do that. And I think that looks, we could look better on our school system if we are if we did that, knowing that we have the money to do that, so.
Well, that's all I had on it. I just, if you handle it, that's, that's good. I know, again, I mean, if you handle it again for the second time, third, fourth time, hold up for more favor, or five times. Just, I just don't want to have to do it.
Two, want to is two different things.
No, it's like needing more.
All right, we will move on. Any need for executive session?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. If I can get everybody to clear out. Oh, we gotta have a motion, sorry. Do we have a motion entered to executive, we can't until everybody clears out?
No, you do a motion.
We have a motion to enter to executive session.
So moved.
Shoulders, Mr. Apple, seconds. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Will we be able to return back to the?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Were the people that's here in the crowd and come back and listen if we just, after the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I know there's a lot of people come out and.
Yes.
Don't want them to come out for nothing.
If I can, though, I need to get everybody to clear the room, and you'll be able to come back after we have the executive session. Caleb, do we have a second?
Second.
Shoulders, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Back in the regular session. Our next board meeting will be April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen at five. Any other business needs to come to board the board?
Can we put something on the agenda tonight, which I think this is pretty well common knowledge of our, our basketball coach at Carthage has resigned, correct?
What?
Basketball boy at Carthage, has he not resigned? Resignation?
I think he's been asked to. I'll be the basketball coach.
The Carthage? At Carthage?
Yes, oh, yes.
Yeah, that's who I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay.
He's been asked to resign. He resigned on his own.
He resigned yesterday.
He resigned.
So y'all just have to excuse me because I'm not where, and we may have done talking about that with our.
So where's he going? Going home. I mean, I'll tell you, going home. He's teaching, he is our evaluator here. Again.
Time out, time out, time out, time out. I don't think we can discuss, I mean, I don't know, that's up to our attorneys, but specific employees cannot be discussed at a, at the board table, without giving notice to the employee.
If you're going to discuss a specific employee, then you're required to give that employee notice. Now, that question asked, did a position resign, that's fine.
That's what I asked.
But Brian, go into specifics about that, you have to give them notice, and they have to, or they have.
But that position then resigned, right?
The, the basketball.
Yes.
Yes.
So what will be the procedure in filling that again, Mr. Brian?
Well, the athletic director and the principal will interview for it, and then they'll make a recommendation who they feel like at the end of their interview process, and it'll come before Mr. Smith, and then it'll come before the board for approval, just like any other.
I think it's, I think it's supposed to.
No, it will not come.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
It will be in your packet.
It'll be in our packet, it's superintendent action.
So we don't hire ball coaches.
Yes, 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 superintendent, I'm sorry.
So the same, the same thing will be done with the Gorman's position, correct?
All positions.
All positions. They'll go through the athletic director and the principal.
Tracy Bratcher, she handles every bit of that, human resource.
Here at the central office?
Yes.
So before anybody's put in place in any one of those two positions, we'll, we'll be able, we'll be able to say it here.
E As, custodians.
No, sir.
No.
Process is, principal, athletic director, interviews, takes applications, interviews if they choose to do so, and then makes recommendations to the director. The director then either accepts or rejects that principal or athletic director's recommendation. And then you see it as a superintendent action at your next meeting. So you do not vote on it. The only particular positions you vote on are what you did tonight for tenured teachers.
And the director.
You grant tenure by statute, and that's all that the board focuses on.
So this is all, this is all on our director's shoulders who gets placed where and?
Yes, sir.
Not exactly.
Well, not exactly.
We, we pretty much.
He gets the recommendation.
The recommendation, or the principal and athletic director, they'll bring a name to me. And like Mr. Lewis, I stole his words years ago, ninety-nine, I, especially as director, I don't think he ever interfered with one hire that I did, I brought it. But he always told me, ninety-nine, ninety-nine, I reserve the right for something I need to know, or I'll make the final call. But I don't think I've never, I can't think of him about, never went with a recommendation.
There's where we, right there is where we'll see what he does, and a superintendent action.
Mr. Winkler, you had some handouts.
We just see what he's, if there's been a hire under, and a staff placement.
Do you care if I get this?
I mean, that's in your book too, it's.
Hmm.
Those are approved at every board meeting?
Yeah, we, it's every board meeting that comes out. You can see who's been transferred, who's been, who's, who's resigned, who's been hired, who's.
Well, all I want to do is put on the agenda for next month. I don't know if we do it here or not, but more detail how this situation in Gorman's went down.
You can't do that.
We can't, we can't do a specific.
Well, you can.
We could do what executive session, and if you can.
Well, I'm just asking, all I'm asking, I've had phone calls from people wanting to know why this position in Gorman's, I'm just putting it out there the way it is. And I'd like to know, was it handled correctly? Because, you know, I'm answering to those people. You answer to me, the director answers to us. I mean, there's just, there's a line of picking order, correct? I'd like just to know the right answer to tell people, was this done correct, or is it done incorrect?
Yes, sir. And first area of your inquiry should be your director. You should go to him and ask him that. There's nothing wrong with putting on, if you want some type of change in the reporting procedure from your director, there's nothing wrong if you want to make that. A new business item to possibly come up with a policy on how you want things reported, there's nothing wrong with that. But in that particular instance, you should ask him directly, give him the information.
You may have to help, to help me do what you just said, but I'd like to sort of go through and see if we could go with that, because you, Brian, just.
Just like a, you want to know a procedure, how, you want to know the procedure. But we can, I mean, we can go through that procedure and that's, on the board. As long as it's not a, we can't legally do a specific case. I mean, I don't want to get anybody in trouble.
Do you want to change your policy on how things are reported, and you?
We can do that.
We can change policy if there's something.
How do we start that?
We'll put it on the agenda of the policy for hiring and, well, no, we can't do for hiring, because that's, that's a statute, that's beyond what we can do.
What I think we need to do, if I can make a suggestion, and I think would make the most sense, is take Mr. Winkler up on his offered board, either a special call meeting or work session, to go through in detail the policies, because I do think that there's some, some confusion on the board as to what we can do statutorily and what we can't do statutorily. There is no system for us as a board to have a voice on who gets hired as janitor, who gets hired as coach, who gets hired as principal. That is not within our purview. The man sitting at the end of the table is the one employee, and the one and only employee that this board deals with. And if there is confusion, we need to address it through policy. I agree that we need to be communicated with, that is without a doubt we need communication. Mr. Smith's phone is, he always answers it when I call him, or calls me right back, and certainly returns texts. So, I mean, if there's questions, call him. If you want to talk to him, call him. But otherwise, I think we need to take up Mr. Winkler's suggestion and go through these policies and these statutes, so there is no confusion about what the law is and what is required of us and our board.
So basically, what you're saying is?
There is no good old boy system, that's what I'm saying.
The only thing we can do, if we don't like what he's doing, is fire him, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
You can change a policy that you don't agree with. So, do we want to do a work session? Everybody in agreement that want to do a work session over this?
I would.
Well, I would just, I personally like to see more transparency in people that's in our county system that can be dismissed from a position, just because, you know, I don't know a person who's hard in a situation. Nobody here does. If you like me, Brian, or you don't like me, it might affect you how you judge me, or say, hey, I don't need you no longer in this position, let's get rid of you. I'm going to use, all I'm saying is, we don't need to have that much power and authority given to one man, not him, I'm talking about other people that could be principals that can remove people out of their own disposal.
When, when the statute changed back in the nineties, where it went from elected to elect, from elected superintendent, my father-in-law was the last one, to an appointed director, our, our roles changed, guys. Used to, in the old days, if you wanted a job, or you wanted to hire a coach, we hired. When that changed and the statute changed, this is the man right here, and he goes with the principals, guys. This is our only employee, is him. We don't hire or fire coaches. We create positions, I mean, we make policy, we make the budget, we hired a director's school, we grant tenure, period. That's, you learn that the first day you do your training on the School Board Association.
I think that's too, that's too broad an area, though, over one circumstance that's been handled, done correctly.
I do, I think, I think we should.
I didn't say.
That's just me.
Nobody disagrees with you with that, but it's just the law.
It's the law, it's me.
But Marty, that's one reason we let a H R person post, to make sure that's done, not the one person. Most of them, we hire an administrator, we, we let the central office staff interview them. And then it comes to me before recommendation, make. It's not one, we could be, but it's not, it don't work that way most staff.
I just feel like there's been some outcry of other employees, and everybody here knows what we're talking about, the situation that's happened in Gorman's. But there's been other teachers that's come out, or some of the board members, I, well, let's back that up. There's been people that works in this county system thinks, I'm working on thin ice in case a principal don't like me, I can be removed. And I'm not putting words in nobody's mouth. I'm not, I'm not for the judgment, or I'm not against what happened in Gorman's. I'm not saying I'm for what happened or against it. I don't have no information. That's, that's facts. You gotta have facts, I'm sure. And it may be facts that, why this happened over there. But until we get to look at it, I mean, we're sort of sitting here, Tommy, like, I mean, does that put you in a good position? Is that just part of my job, is just sit here and take the outcry of people and say, well, it's not on my shoulders? Well, they voted us in here for a reason.
But the people's got to understand what my role is and what his role is. And I've told them once it's called me, I don't hire coaches. That's not my role. And I'm, I'm, do I like what's happened? No. But I can't do nothing about it. Now, if I wanted to fire him, I guess I could, if I got enough votes, or if I don't grant him contact extension. But we don't hire, we don't hire coaches, we don't hire teachers.
Let me ask a question then, and I'm just, I'm just being, whatever, I just, okay, so we don't hire anybody. And I understand everything you're saying. It's, yeah, it's crystal clear to me, it's, it's crystal clear. What happens if, what happens if we have a position that is filled, that, that there's just like a outrageous outcry about? We go to him and say, hey, we're getting a lot of public feedback about this, you want to?
But that still don't do nothing for the situation, Scotty.
Sure it does.
No, it don't. What's it do?
Well, I mean.
Let's, let's just say for instance.
Let me get, let me.
Go ahead.
Okay, let me give you a, for instance, we have had that situation before where people have been in positions that they didn't need to be in.
Exactly.
Or did not work out, or for whatever reason, we're getting calls about. The way that it has been handled prior is, you know, I've had conversations with Mr. Smith, hey, I got a phone call that, you know, and then we're, one phone call may not do it, but multiple phone calls about the same employee or the same situation, that, you know, you know, merits a call. But Mr. Smith can certainly make a change.
Can a, but there again, can a principal make that change without your consent?
No, I have to be the final. But it also says about my designated, my correct name. And I, I, I handle usually if it's a criminal type case, it's a money, that type thing. Other than that, I'm going to go ninety-nine, ninety-nine, put that principal's recommendation, because it's their building.
Seems to me, though, so every employee that you just mentioned somewhere earlier, earlier, four hundred and eighty-two employees?
Eighty-eight.
Four eighty-eight. So you had to sign off basically and say, I'm, I'm, I'm good with this employee. Does that go from school bus janitors, school bus drivers, cooks, teachers?
But I have never not signed off, to my knowledge, one at a principal, bus supervisor, cafeteria, federal programs, has brought them in.
And I want to state, I'm not here, there's not a vendetta against you in case people here, or y'all, the board, I'm not sitting here trying to make a case against you. I'm trying to make a case for our system to be a little transparent, that we can say, okay, I have an answer for why this guy was let go.
I think, Marty, that is why we've done it that way, the transparency. Then, then by doing that, it's not me just saying, I don't like Marty Makayla, you're grounded.
Yeah, that's exactly what we need to be at, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole purpose of these procedures that, that we've tried to do, the way we've done it, for that reason. And, and their, our employees have rights. See, we can't just start giving out to the media, and it's, you know, I, we let Ms. Moore go, and calls us this, and this, and this. That's a lawsuit, you can't do that.
Director, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's, let's flip this a different way, this might, this might give a different perspective on it. Let's say, if you have a position.
Let's say, if you have a position as such, and an individual is transferred out of that position or whatever, do they have, if, if they're upset about that, do they have a right to appeal that to you?
If they were transferred out of that position? I wouldn't make a phone call, but I, anything that I don't know, I should not always-
Well, I guess, let me, let me say it a different way, let's say that, uh, because we're, we're based on the nine-nine-nine-nine system that, with the principals having say, and let's say, let's say, for example, maybe that position disagreed with the principal's perspective on it. Do they have that right to come to you then?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And if they don't agree with that, why do they have a right to do it to somebody? That's it?
One, one thing too, that I want to point out here too, that I, I don't think that we can discount, is our teachers and principals that are in these buildings day to day, and they know far more than we know sitting at this table about what's going on, and I do think that we have to put a tremendous amount of trust in our teachers and our principals, because they are the ones that make those decisions and do see what's going on day to day, and if, which we can't do it by statute, but even if we could, if we start meddling in the day-to-day, and we can't, but I'm using a, you know, if, if we did, you're not going to have a teacher, a principal, an administrator anywhere that's going to want to work for this county, because you are absolutely undermining your employees when you try to make a decision at this table related to employment, and that, I think that is exactly why the statute is the way that it is, and it's very clear. But give, you know, give your principal some credit.
So do we want a work session?
I've had four teachers call me, said they were scared of their job every day they go to work and they've been in the school system.
But they need to be addressed. I'm not saying not to address it, I'm not saying not to address it at all, but-
And I'm not sitting here looking for power that I don't want or need, I have all that we, I can deal with anyway as far as, you know, but I, I think we're putting too much responsibility on, on our director in one sense.
It's not us, it's the statute, it's the statute.
Oh.
That was done by the general assembly.
We have a world of teachers that are scared to breathe.
I haven't heard from anyone.
I think we need to have a work session then.
You got no calls on this, I don't understand that.
Me either, because I mean, I'm normally, I mean, I got, everybody in the world knows my phone number, most of them know my cell number.
You got a teacher that's not happy or scared of their job, they don't do justice to a child, and that's what we're all about to children.
Oh, I totally agree with that, but at the same time, reach out and let somebody know what's going on, I haven't heard from anybody that's scared for their job, and if they are, they need to be calling me. I'll do something about it, I mean, I'm, you know, I have no issue with, with taking action. I've taken a lot of hard and difficult positions on this board, uh, but, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not the one getting phone calls.
They just take it to the director.
That's exactly right.
That's right, that is.
What about April second? How's everybody scheduled a little?
What day of the week is that?
It's on Tuesday, it would be two weeks from today. That give time to, that would give time to put notice?
Yes, sir.
Are you good with, so good as a second? April second, five o'clock, everybody okay? We'll just have a work session, go over this, procedures, get it all, what we can, what we can do.
Well, let me, let me bring something else up before we do that, and I don't know if I'm, we're allowed to do that, I'm just asking since, so the position that's open and the, since the resignation, is it going to be filled, how soon is it going to be filled? I don't know if we're out, but I just feel like I need to know that, is it going to be filled?
It has to be, there's a policy on it, it has to be posted for a period of time.
Has to be posted what?
Posted, I believe.
How long?
I don't know up top there, so I don't know how long.
So if, so if-
We generally post the minimum, save me two hours, been on the other weekend, of course.
Save me two hours?
So if it's posted-
Not always, it's been a situation, if you have a, if a principal, I have an overabundance of good applicants, but, uh, there's no, I think, since we're in the situation right now, we don't have a set time, I think you do it immediately, legally.
So it's posted in seventy-two?
That's what we, now they could have been on the file, but they wouldn't, to my knowledge, anything that's ever, I'm not going to say or tell you something untrue, uh, so I do, as you see, hundreds of moves, so, like, that's what I bet a HR person will do.
Um, Mr. Smith, do you keep statistics or does Ms. Bratcher keep statistics on, um, as far as like inter-county transfers or?
Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith.
Like in, inter-county transfers and-
We could go back and pull it.
I, I didn't know if y'all like-
Well, yeah, they'd be-
I didn't know if y'all tallied, like, I mean, you have to keep, uh, like-
You asking like, a volunteer transfer or a?
No, I'm asking for purposes of, uh, say if you had a principal position open, the last one we had, whatever, I don't even know who it would have been, maybe the middle school, you had that position open, do you keep up with the number of applicants and which ones are applying? Okay, maybe that would help if, if that was something that was passed on, because I think some of the concern is, seems to be out-of-county hires or whatever, maybe if that, if, if we had that information, we could, maybe people would understand better that there is nobody but out-of-county people applying for some of these positions that are getting filled, because they're not within the system, you know, maybe, I don't, I don't know.
How far back would you want us to go?
Well, I'm just making a suggestion, because that seems to be one of the issues that's-
Going forward, as you talked about.
Yeah, going forward.
Hello?
Going forward.
Going forward. Oh, I can go back and pull it, don't show you the last so many sentences of concern.
Well, why don't you go back in, um, maybe the last year, not only maybe every position, but, what, I mean, I don't want to put a tremendous work burden-
It won't be, that's, that's midterm or something.
Okay, or, I don't want a tremendous work burden, but I think that would help the board understand where, uh, where the numbers are coming from, and then maybe on future hires, if we could have that, once the, once the, uh, position has been filled, if we had a number of applicants, a number of what would be an in-system hire or out-of-system hire, so that we can see that.
I've got something on the books for April second, is there any way we do it that Monday?
I'm fine with Monday, but I don't know if everybody else is, it's-
I'm fine.
April fourth.
Are you fine with Monday?
April fourth, yeah.
Five o'clock.
On April first?
Yeah.
Is that good with everybody?
I appreciate that.
Let's move about April-
Director, can I ask you a question? Since you brought that right there, can I ask you a question real quick? Just since you brought that up, it, it made me think a little bit, and I'm sure it's in there and I haven't read it yet, like, uh, when we post the empty position, like she was talking about a few minutes ago, do we, is, how, is there a particular way that runs, that was what I'm trying to say, do we, is it posted where we limit it to only our present employees first?
It goes out immediately, and I, I can get you the exact procedures from HR, but it goes out immediately to the principals, and they post it, like the teacher's lounge, I think it goes to each employee immediately, before it ever goes anywhere else, and then, June, she puts it on, puts it on the way up, and a lot of times it goes to, like if it's a coach, it goes to the O S double A website, a lot of times the A Ds do that, but it goes out, I think, Mr. Smith, it goes out immediately to employees, but I get it, I don't, I don't even deal with, she, I tell her, it's ready to post, she gets the information from that particular principal, for what they're looking for, and like if it's something that can do multiple disciplinary issues, you might say TBA on the position, so on, it just depends on-
Well, let me, maybe I, maybe I didn't ask that right, because with what she was talking about, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, like, if we have an open position, do we, do we limit our applicants to begin with, with, with current employees only?
No, it's not a ranking system, it says, hey, I live in Rush Creek or Smith County or-
Well, here's what, here's what I'm, here's what I'm- I guess he's saying, if I don't know if he can offer it to the employees first. I mean, like, if we've got an open-
I was saying, it's not been an issue in the past because we're lucky to even-
Well, I'm not saying it's the issue now, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, do we, I mean, kind of what I had on my mind was, you know, give the, give the president, present employees offering the first, and if they don't like it, go countywide, and if they don't like it, then go wherever, you know what I mean?
Are you saying, like, you mean like, like, kind of like a stadium employee?
Yeah.
Where they can transfer even in a department?
Yeah, and, and Mr. Lewis, what I was saying, it's not that, in the past, it hasn't been an issue from the fact they went, there ain't been enough numbers, I mean, so we'd not even be getting in many positions, we don't want to get an applicant, especially admin and some of those stuff, so it's not been an issue from the fact that it's been, we're just trying to find enough that you can come in, you know what I mean?
I understand, well, I mean, and, and just, I don't know, my, my only thought process with that was, was if, if, uh, well, I mean, I'm just going to say like, yes, I, if we've got an open position, you know, and we've got employees already in place, I'd, I'd love to see them have first opportunity at something before it went somewhere else.
Sure.
And then, and then if our open employees don't, or our present employees not interested, then open it up to the county and see what happens, and if we don't, if we don't have it in the county, then, I don't know, go to California and get it or something, you know what I mean, but-
But you'd have to extend the time on it, instead of seventy, instead of seventy-two hours, which is three days, you'd have to be extended.
But we're not, now, if you're opening it wide open, we don't leave them open because you lose applicants too, especially this time of year, you don't grab it, they're gone.
Yeah, well, you see where I'm coming from, I, I just was asking kind of how it went right now, I, I mean, I, like, like you're talking about, but I mean, I-
I do think that's might be a part, something that we could look at doing.
You just need to make sure that a practice was discriminatory, that, if you opened it, if you just posted it for a period, take local applications and then extend it.
But we are discriminating, no. If we don't give it to our people first, we are discriminating.
Right, I'm just saying the practice itself doesn't need to be-
But I'm, but you see, what I'm saying, no, we're discriminating against our people if we don't give them first choices then.
If it's going out at the same time, it's going out there to be first to email.
Well, let me say it this way, maybe, maybe this makes more sense, I get convoluted sometimes. Let's say that we're going to advertise for opening a position that requires a PhD, okay? And we have got five people already working in our school system that have a PhD. I would like to see those five people have the opportunity first, before I have somebody in Nashville give them the same opportunity with a PhD, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
I, I'd like to see our employees give that first shot.
Have a window of opportunity for it.
Yeah, before anybody else sees, you know what I mean, and, and then if they don't, if they ain't got it, then you know what, if nobody wants it, there you go, don't, don't complain later, I mean, then go, go elsewhere.
The, the only risk with doing that is, I don't mean to interrupt, Mr. Winkler, would be that sometimes we may only get an applicant, a less than desirable applicant from a local level, uh, and we don't need, in my opinion, to be stuck with hiring somebody who thinks they would be a, a good principal or a good administrator, uh, and they don't meet those qualifications. That, that's-
I'm not, I'm not saying we have to hire them, but I'm not saying have first option.
And I totally, and I totally agree with you, you know, Mr. Lewis, I absolutely agree that, I think that's a good idea, but I, I would want to make sure that a policy like that would include some type-
The ability to move, right.
Yes, so that you can't, uh, because what, you know, sometimes, you know, quite frankly, people think that they are more qualified than they are, and actually, you know that from your line of work.
And what he's saying would require a, a specific policy change, it'd be excellent to talk about that in a work session.
Are you going to be, are you going to be at our training session, do you think it's even necessary, I think it needs to be there. I didn't mean for it to get all the way to the side, but you see what I'm talking about.
I, I agree with you.
I mean, that's a benefit we can offer them, doesn't cost us anything.
We just have to horse eat now, since it's say that twenty places have been limited, just to say, Smith County Web first, or, you know, going after employees.
However goes to employees, you, you don't want to make that in.
I do think-
If it's not there, it's just not there.
I do think what you, you had a good point though, that I hadn't thought of, and this is just in, in practice, on the seventy-two hour deal that you were talking about, that a, a well-qualified employee may move somewhere else, so we may have, it may have to be a short wait.
We may leave one open, we've had one, we've got open for weeks, there's probably one up right now, but, but, you know, our principals get on it once, if, if you leave it open and you've got thirty people, and you feel like it's a good pool, what's the purpose, I guess, of, you know, because they just, it puts more stress on them, and they may lose somebody that's in that pool we're looking for too.
Sure. Well, and that's true, and that, and all that, but I, just personally, personally, even though we might run the risk of losing one that's in a pool or something, I'd still run, see my employees have the opportunity first, you know what I mean?
We could set a policy, could we set a policy that said it's got to be open minimum? I mean, I, it makes it easier on us, I mean, that's what board will say, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Get a chance to hire.
Probably have a policy to decide to change now.